Hey, James, I don't have any audio. This is Steve.
I can hear you. We just didn't have the sound on.
I can't hear anything going on yet.
Okay, yeah, I'm muted.
Okay, good. Just checking. Thank you.
Mr. Hefkin, you ready?
I am, sir.
These pick up even better now. What's that? Is the city engineer on virtually? They're nodding their head.
Yes.
We're all like bobles.
We have four staff members virtual: Nicole, Linda Sharp, Kim, and Chris.
Awesome.
City attorneys.
The city attorneys.
Alrighty. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting to order for Tuesday, September 8th. Roll call, please.
Eversol, Agni, Neimetz, Wrestler, Ho Camp.
Alright, if everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty. First, recognition and... Come up here. What is the camera nowadays?
It'll just be where you're talking.
Oh, right here? Oh, it moves?
It moves, yeah.
No way. Well, Wes, let's come up here. That way we'll have the Columbia, Illinois sign. That's you. So Wes, in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service to the city of Columbia, Illinois, and its citizens as Director, Columbia Emergency Management Agency for from 2013 to 2020.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Wes doesn't smoke.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wes.
Alrighty. And also, September 17th marks the Constitution Week, so we have a proclamation that September 17th marks 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States. Public law, 915 guarantees, the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Kevin Hutchinson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Columbia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that last lost rights may never be retained. And I signed it this 8th day of September. Alright. Do we have any other proclamations, presentations, any public input?
We did not receive anything in email.
James, anybody raising their hand virtually or jumping up and down or... Okay. Comments and announcements, just as everybody understands, we're going through a lot of trying times. Please support local business as much as possible and in any way possible. These are just unprecedented times and we're gonna have to do anything and everything we can do to try to make this as normal as possible. I am getting numerous phone calls, which I'm sure you guys already know from businesses, that they're hemorrhaging money. And the scary thing is, is that it's gonna be an economical cold that they're gonna get that could put them out of business. And so, please, order food to go. Make sure that you're supporting local business. Any aldermen? Any announcements? Alderman Neimetz?
I can hear. Actually, I have two things and I'll try to make them short. The first one, you received an email from me that I copied you in on and sent to you and it was directed at Chris Smith and I just was telling him that I had the opportunity to go from the west side of Rock, Illinois route to cross across the Beaumshue Craft Park on the new section of the trail and up Monroe Street, up Main Street, up towards the Abbey at the end of the Main Street Improvement Project and ran along to a lot of people along the way. And if you haven't taken that route yet, that new trail piece is open. It kind of takes you into new vistas in the back of the park. There's shade. There's a lot of things that I think people didn't get back there to enjoy before. So I hope you do that and I thank Chris for the job. I know that's been 10 years. It's been 15 years that we've been talking about this. And to secure all those easements and properties and everything we needed and get the schools' cooperation with us, which they did fully, it's just great to walk on it finally. It was wonderful. Cross-country team was out there running. A lot of citizens were. So if you haven't been out there, I hope you will, and down Main Street the same because it's a very pleasant route. So I'm very grateful. I told Chris and everybody that was involved, thank you for that project to completion. So the other thing, Mayor, is that I had read in both of our local newspapers about Prairie de Rocher and Fort Deschard, their effort to gain the... They would like to become a national park and they have a steering committee. They've met with Representative Bost and citizens are sending in their input. And we just visited. We drove down there over the weekend and visited. And it would be really good for the history of Prairie de Rocher and the Fort Deschard. And I really hope that maybe through southwestern Illinois mayors, maybe just as a city, if the aldermen agree, it's something we could draft a letter, join the effort on and send our support. It would be great if Monroe and Randolph would both show their support for it. And as far as that, Madison too. I mean, we're on the Cascasquia-Cohokia Trail. We're all part of that and that history goes back to 1720. So I know Alderman Agni has been involved there for decades. So it's just such a huge piece of our history. And I don't know what we can do. I don't have an action plan. So it's real easy for me to say, boy, I hope we can do something.
Is there... You said there's a committee formed?
There is. There is. And I have information that I can forward to Doug and yourself or just to Doug and he can disseminate or whatever.
The best thing would be for that committee to disseminate to us and then to the southwest Illinois mayors because I know we have supported when they were doing the national park and getting things going at the Cohokeye Mounds and at other places. So, you know, basically, we look at the entire metro east, the seven counties. So there is no reason why we couldn't get overwhelming support from all the mayors in the region for this. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I will. I'll forward everything I can get my hands on. And if I can request some more, I will make sure that you get that information too. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Any other alderman announcements? Department heads? You have anything? Mr. Hefkin?
Petitions for the consolidated election, which will be held Tuesday, April 6th of 2021, are city of Columbia offices of mayor, clerk, aldermen wards 1 through 4 are available to be picked up at the clerk's office starting Monday, September 14th. The first day to circulate the petitions will be Tuesday, September 22nd. And then the first date to file petitions at the clerk's office is Monday, December 14th, 2020, and will continue through Monday, December 21st, 2020.
Alright. So if you have any additional questions, make sure you see the city clerk or the county clerk. Any other department or director reports? Consent agenda, Mr. Hefkin.
We have six items on the consent agenda. The first one is a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2020 regular city council meeting. Motion to approve Resolution 2020-20 regarding the release of closed session minutes. Item number three is a motion to approve the payment of vouchers for the period of August 12th, 2020 through September 2nd, 2020 for a total amount of $517,172.93. Motion to approve statement of funds for three months. Month ending May 31st, month ending June 30th, and month ending July 31st of 2020. Motion to approve special event permit for Songs for Soldiers Donate, Drive, and Dine Event, which is scheduled to be held 12th September, 2020. And then the sixth and final is a motion to accept the gift from Sister Cities.
Alright. Is there any questions, comments? Anything anybody would like to have removed? Alderman Neimetz?
No, Mayor, before we vote on that, do you care to have the Sister Cities? Is there anything information-wise that the...
I mean, we've seen the pictures and everything, but if anybody... Do you have a question or... I mean, it's kind of a beautiful plaque and a done deal. I think we've seen the picture that Ingrid was gonna show us in our notes, but... Yeah, it's the same picture, so... Alright, yeah. If nobody has any questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Alderman Hoop, seconded by Alderman Neimetz. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Eversol, Agni, Neimetz.
Yes.
Wrestler, Ho Camp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, under unfinished business resolution number 202021, setting time and place for the public hearing considering the exchange of real estate. Somebody be trying to make that motion by Neimetz, seconded by Eversol. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who made this motion?
I'm sorry. Neimetz, seconded by Eversol.
Got it, sorry.
Might have been a little muffled.
Maybe I was right. Eversol, Agni, Neimetz.
Yes.
Wrestler, Ho Camp, Martins, Riddle.
Yes.
I'm older now, Kevin.
Aren't we all? Alright, new business. Number one, motion to approve a fence installation on the GM&amp;O Heritage Trail at Gator and Village. I think everybody's aware of the long, long history of the trail and what's been going on. For a while, it was just kind of presented out there that, you know, hey, use the trail, be courteous, stay on the trail. There was a couple residents that would get a little testy with people walking on the trail. And I believe I'm correct, when we were having these discussions, that as soon as they pretty much put up signs and restricted the use of others using the trail, that they've made it clear that they are concerned about others using the trail. So my feeling is that if they're concerned about their private property ending where the public property meets, that we should help them out with their concerns of others using the trail. And we will just go ahead and put up a fence to barricade the others using that trail to safeguard their concerns of safety and people in their backyards and things of this nature. So that's what I would like to have discussion and a motion on tonight. Alderman Martins?
Is that fence will it be so that someone walking the trail could go on the city street then and go around through their neighborhood on the city street and get to the other part of the trail, right?
Well, no, it's...
The fence is gonna be before that.
The fence will be because on the part where, you know, the fence goes behind all the houses on Bregal or the fence, the trail goes behind all the houses on Bregal. There's no way to access that from any other place except for, I believe it's Rick Road is the really first access point. So that's where they would be able to access the trail.
But isn't once a trail ends in Gator or where, you know, there's a pedestrian bridge going into the subdivision?
Oh, yeah, from the pedestrian bridge, absolutely. Because public sidewalks are public sidewalks.
So they can walk through there to get to the other side of the trail if they have to and we can put a sign up saying...
Correct.
Follow that to the trail. So it will go through their neighborhood to get to the...
Well, but the other side of the trail will still be... I mean, it'll be blocked off. They've made it very clear. They do not want anybody on that trail in the backyards of the Gator and Village. But the rest of it, yes, that will be...
We can have a sign stating that.
Sure.
Letting people know where they can go.
Yeah, that the sidewalk is public right of way and they could walk on the sidewalk. Alderman Wrestler? Yeah, we're talking a six-foot-tall fence that would go all the way down both sides to prevent people from... Correct. Correct, yeah. We... Correct. It's going to be a deterrent and it would be difficult to try to circumvent. Any other questions?
We did receive a price today for the sections at both ends of the trail, $1,361.
And to protect their safety and their concerns, I think that is fitting, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman Ho Camp here.
Yes.
I strongly disagree with this. I realize that those signs were put up and I don't think the intent was that, don't come on the trail. I think we need to take some time and meet with the HOA and the citizens of Gaderne Village. They need to speak, not through their HOA necessarily, but by some type of ballot or something because I don't think that's the intent of the entire subdivision. I really think that would look really bad for everybody. And I would like to... I could even begin some type of a discussion with the HOA people and the other citizens of the subdivision. I just think that's a real bad thing to do. This is not the time we want to exclude everybody.
And Alderman Ho Camp, I could not agree more if it wasn't for the fact that we've tried to have those discussions in the past. We've tried to get input in the past. We have tried to get the citizens to come forward with or around the HOA. And every time that we think that we're getting somewhere, we get roadblocks, we get nasty comments, we get chalk written on the trail. And now it basically reads, "End of public trail, private property, Gator and Village Homeowners Association." That's pretty clear that nobody else is welcome.
Well, see, I would disagree with that.
But this doesn't mean, just because we put it up today, if they want to start dialogue and they want to start having conversations and maybe we could come up with something that works for everybody down the road, hey, a fence goes down as easy as it goes up. But at this point, they've really made it very clear and I've had a lot of citizens concerned about, why aren't you sectioning it that off if they are that concerned about others on their trail?
I understand that, but as a citizen of the subdivision, I know that a few of the HOA members may feel that way, but I don't think the subdivision as a whole does. And I'd like to have a stay of execution, if you will, and then I could maybe get some dialogue going with the people and figure this out before we put up a fence.
Sure. And I don't think it's an execution. I think it's just a clear message that we hear you. You don't want people on the trail and we're gonna assist with protecting your safety.
Yeah. I think there's a better way to do it before we put the fence up.
Well, I was gonna say to Alderman Ho Camp, tell them to come up here to the meeting and address the board, you know. I mean, we'd be more than willing to hear from those people. I think we'd love to hear from those people because we've heard of the other people before who are demanding this. So the easiest way is for, say, hey, guys, come to the council meeting, talk to council and say, we don't want this. You know, that's not... No one has come forward saying that. So if there is, if there are people like that, tell them to come up here and we'd be glad to hear them.
And Alderman Martins, that's exactly what I'm recommending as well. I need to start that dialogue, though.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be, you know, I can easily put together an email. We've got a group, you know, the entire subdivision is on it. I can put the email out and see what responses I get before we put up a fence.
Yeah, well, my feeling is, we've tried all that in the past. When we asked for a vote of the subdivision in the past, homeowners association actually said, no, we won't do it. And so my feeling is, we'll do this to protect the wishes and the concerns of others being on their trail by those that have voiced their concern and put up the signs. And if we hear different from the majority and they come forward, it can come down as easy as it goes up.
How about just give me a couple weeks?
They had years and months, Steve. And I understand where you're coming from, Steve, but let them know. This is... It's a fence. It's not permanent. It's not forever. Let's discuss it and come to a consensus. But as long as you have people saying others are not allowed, then we need to respect that and protect that.
Well, I guess if I could find out when the fence is gonna be erected, I could probably do something before then.
Alderman Eversol?
I guess I would propose sending them a letter, telling them that we're going to do this. Just to give them a warning and...
Well, I don't want it to be a warning. This isn't...
Not a warning, but a notice that we're gonna do that's perfect.
Yeah, it's not a notice or a warning. We made it very clear in the last discussions when the homeowners association was in front of us that as long as everybody, for lack of a better term, played well in the sandbox, that life would be good. But as soon as we have citizens... I mean, our own public works people got the police called on them. I mean, when that happens, they've made it very clear, they do not want others in their backyard. So until we hear different from the majority of the homeowners and a formal action from the homeowners association, they've... I mean, this has been discussed, as Alderman Neimetz said, for far over the last two, three years. So this isn't a surprise. This isn't an ultimatum. It's not a threat. It's you've made it clear you do not want others on your trail and that you're concerned about safety. So we are doing what needs to be done to keep others off of your trail and to protect your safety until you voice your opinion otherwise.
And I understand that and I do want to let everybody know we've just had a change of some of the HOA people. So I think maybe we ought to let the new people, you know, at least entertain this as a threat that's coming and respond. And then if they don't, then I would have supported.
Okay. Well, Alderman Neimetz?
Alderman Ho Camp, until you have the other 46 or 47 voices from the households represented in Gator and Village, I don't think you will ever have a clear-cut answer to this. And as the mayor said, we are taking action from our portion because we have been told, our employees have been told, our citizens have been told, stay out. And that's the action we're taking.
I hear what you're saying, but so one person out of 46 says, stay out. I don't know who says stay out.
They must be very powerful in order to enact all of this.
Well, Alderman Ho Camp, I would disagree that it's one person. There was a sign that states it's from the homeowners association. It's very clear that it was put up by the homeowners association representing the bridge of, you know, Gator.
When they just put that sign together, which was actually over a year ago, the intent was an informational sign, not a keep-out sign. Now, whether it came out exactly like informational is debatable. But that sign was put together a long time, over a year ago and just put up.
Private property, public trail ends. That's more than informational. That's saying...
But that's no different than you driving from one county to another, that now it's Monroe County and leaving another county. That's just a boundary. It's not a...
Those are public right-of-ways. Those are public right-of-ways and it's known that they are open to the public. They've made it very clear that this is private for the Gator and Village homeowners.
And it is. So, but, okay. Well, I'm gonna try to put together something tonight and contact the entire subdivision and we'll see if we can get something going.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other questions, concerns? And I entertain a motion to move forward with the purchase of and putting up the fence as presented. Motion by Alderman Neimetz, seconded by Alderman Eversol. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Eversol.
Yes.
Agni.
Yes.
Neimetz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Ho Camp.
No.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Steve, I want to make it very clear, we do respect your comments and don't necessarily disagree with them. Hopefully, this will spark the association and the folks in the neighborhood to come forward and truly let their voices be heard. Alright, next is item two, street closure request. Reeve Snyder's Grilling Grape at East Bogus Street and Arkasa at East Walnut Street. As you all know, we gave the staff the right to let people put up fences, geez, put up tents to assist with their businesses and things of this nature. Well, it's been brought to our attention that some of the businesses would like to protect their parking area for their patrons and use the street for the tents and for, I guess, you know, to serve food and things of this nature with the latest direction from the governor. So in discussing with staff, we weren't comfortable kind of taking that next level to start shutting down streets without council approval. I'd like to hear from the council. If everybody feels comfortable that staff will work with police and fire and ambulance and everybody will work it out to make sure that everybody involved with the street closure is communicated to and understands what it means, I'm comfortable giving that power to staff. But otherwise, on street closures, at this point, I wasn't comfortable saying, yeah, let's move through, you know, forward with that without talking to the council as a whole. So Alderman Agni?
One thing, one concern I had was in the future, if we have more restaurants blocking off streets, that there's always an access street on the Main Street because we're gonna have citizens in the back areas coming up and saying, well, I can't get off Main Street. So there should always be one or two between any street we...
Absolutely. And I'm sure that, you know, when the police and everybody are involved, they'll take that into consideration. Great points. Alderman Eversol?
Yeah, I'm not excited about allowing the tents on the streets permanently. Regarding Rex Sanders, they had a tent up in the back in their patio for... Uh, regarding Reif Sanders, they had a tent up in the back in their patio for how many years? I understand it was safety issues with enclosure. If they have, if they have the sides of the tents up, would that still be a safety issue? And put it in the same place they had it?
It was more of a setback issue. I mean, there were still some.
There were safety issues with the inspection. Um, and staff's position on that was there was probably ample space in the parking lot, but that's not what their request was. Um, and one thing to note, just for everybody's general, do keep in mind that Walnut is a one-way street. Um, so there's limited access if we close Walnut. I just want to make sure you're aware of that. That's your decision to make, but.
And their parking lot is on that one.
Is on a one-way street. So.
Can't get into their parking lot if we close up.
That's there for consideration. But there, there were more issues than just setbacks. It was safety issues that were found with the inspection. Um, we don't have any problem with, with the tent being on that site, nor does the building official. It's just that particular location. Did not meet the setbacks, as the mayor said, but there were other issues with that set, with that tent. And we would have no problem approving it on, on a parking lot if that was the council's. If, if council would prefer not to see it on the streets.
I, I think what Alderman Eversaw was asking Scott was if the tent sides are up or it's not completely enclosed. Is that something where that existing site would work or not?
Yeah, I, I looked into that. Essentially two sides have to re-, remain open to keep it from being and considered an enclosed structure. So you'd have to ask yourself what, I mean, is that giving you enough coverage that you're comfortable with using it?
And so everybody knows the, the conversations that we've had at upper level staff is that we're really kind of waiving a lot of the setbacks and things of this nature. The, the life safety issues of, you know, open fires and, you know, the carbon monoxide poisoning issues and things that of this nature, the true life safety issues, those are not going to be waived. I mean, they're going to have to adhere to the life safety issues. What we're talking about is giving some leeway to setback issues, giving some leeway to just, you know, being able to come up, get a permit, have your tent erected, but it's going to have to be especially on the larger sized tents erected to have the proper tie downs or the proper weights and things of this nature. So it's really going to be um, more of the uh, the setback in timing that we're trying to be more lenient on than the life safety.
It.
Go ahead, Scott.
I, I just wanted to, you made a, an excellent point and uh, speaking with the city engineer earlier today, that was the other thing that we thought was probably important, that if you did approve the tents being in the streets, uh, they need to be uh, held down with ballast, not driving spikes into our streets.
Alderman Agnew?
That was my concern. If the tents are on the parking lots and cars can park on the streets, the liability is clear. Once we put tents on streets, because we haven't looked far into the, the liability of that.
Yes, they would have to name the city as additional insured and hold us harmless. That's already been discussed.
And we already are because they have sidewalk seating. So they, they, that has already been approved for both locations that have been requested.
So is, is everybody still kind of of the, hey, if you're going to shut down a street, you need to come to the city and ask, or are we willing to let staff act accordingly within the kind of outlines that we've discussed here? Alderman Riddle?
Because I mean, once we do this, and I understand what you're asking, if, if everybody can do it, because everybody's going to ask.
Sure.
You know, and, you know, which rightly so. So, I mean, that's. I just want to make sure everybody's thinking.
Yeah, and they'll take everything on a per case basis. I mean, some streets will be easier to shut down than others.
Correct.
You know, it's, and that's what the professionals are going to look at. That's, you know, we got deputy chief back there. We have Scott here, Doug here. You know, they'll talk to the fire department. They will talk to the professionals. And some businesses may just get upset because, well, you let so-and-so and so-and-so. Well, their side street is very different and used very different than yours. So it worked for them. Unfortunately, it doesn't work for you. So it's not one size fits all. That's why I kind of like leaving it to them. So they can discuss it and try to make it fit as fast as possible to keep them in business so they can make some revenue. So we still have restaurants on Main Street.
Yeah, and that's why I think they should come to the city so there's a grand coordinator as to what's going on because they're going to look at their block and where they can put their food. And they uh, they, they need to come to the city so we can coordinate.
Oh yeah, they have to come to the city. They can't just do it. Oh, no, 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 no. The difference is do they have to come to the city council for approval or just the city professionals for approval?
Yep. For what, for what it's worth, we weren't, on staff, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Doug, we weren't uncomfortable saying that somebody could close a street for a few hours and do and, and set up seating in the street for a few hours in the evening. They want to close for two straight weeks and they want to put tents in the middle of it. I wasn't going to make that call.
As I said in my email that I had sent out to the council, June one, whenever we approved the temporary outdoor dining regulations, um, it was kind of given to staff, hey, if they want to close it for a couple of hours during daylight hours, no problem at all. The intent was clearly stated, nothing overnight. As Scott stated, you know, they're looking to do it for two full weeks and erect structures on city right of way. That's where we thought we should defer.
They can't be pulled down very easily if there were an emergency. That's, that's my biggest concern about it is all.
So the temporary nature of those would be that they could have them up until what point? Is there percentages, government has to lift certain, is it twenty percent of occupancy, fifty percent? When would they actually?
The way that uh, uh, Reif Snyder submitted for both Arkasa and Reif Snyder's was until outdoor, or, excuse me, until indoor dining comes back.
What percentage?
I, I would have to go back and look.
I would say.
Would you say if they come back with twenty, fifty, they have to take the tents or would it be full seventy-five percent?
The, the outdoor dining regulations were only in place through phase four. Uh, once we shifted into phase five, whenever there's a vaccine available, that's whenever the temporary outdoor dining regulations would cease to exist.
And I don't have an issue that has to be a certain thing of just being like a defined so that we will be able to say this is when it ends so that if it approaches that, they know it's coming.
Sure. Sure. Alderman Neiman's?
Just saying if life safety is covered and we're named as additional insured, I, I would like to do this. I, 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 I value our businesses as we all do in town so much and they have really taken a tremendous hit. And on the bad weather days when the, when the, when it was misty and rainy, they don't even have an opportunity to serve except for, for carryout. And that's such a small percentage of what they normally do. And if staff and, and police department, everything is addressed. You guys have the judgment on this. You've got the rules and regulations. Let's do it because I'd like to give them as much opportunity as possible.
And this is temporary. I mean,
Right.
And it, and we can set it, like Alderman Ressler said, we can definitely set it to where, hey, guys, and even if you're, you know, five days into your two weeks or whatever time period and we get pushed to the next level to where you get inside seating, those tents come down.
And if there would be an unforeseen issue come up, it would change the.
To be revoked at any time by the professional staff, you know, if all of a sudden.
Causes a nuisance.
Yeah, there was a, oops, we didn't see that coming. Hey, guys, you got to take it down. They just need to understand that we are, you know, this is uncharted territory and we're going to be, you know, running plays on the fly and it's not a perfect world and we're going to make mistakes and we are going to have to redact things or approve it, unapprove it. And as long as the businesses are willing to work with us, we're willing to work with them. So Alderman Eversaw?
What about the vendors that are going to be delivering to these places? Where are they going to park?
Yeah, where do they park now? The middle of the street?
They can figure it out.
It's going to be worse. It's going to be.
Yeah, but they're there hour, half an hour. I mean, it's just, I, I get it. If, if this was a permanent thing, I would say absolutely. That's a, but th- these are just crazy stupid times. And, and we've got rules that are just impossible to maintain business under and we have to do what we can to help them. I mean, it's not perfect. I get it. It's not going to be perfect and there's going to be inconveniences, but hopefully if everybody's in favor of this and Terry, are you on?
I think we.
Lance?
Yeah, it's me.
Hey Luke, are, are we okay with just a motion second to uh, give staff the authority to do this?
I believe so. Um, I think you've, it's part of the ordinance allowing for the outdoor dining and everything with that. I think it'd just be making sure that when they, if they approve these kinds of things, that they make it clear that it's subject to um, revocation for any reason and that there'll be periodic reviews of it.
We'll, we'll make sure staff gets with you and just kind of has some bullet point outlines of the do's and don'ts and what we can and you know, give and he who giveth can take it away. So, alrighty. Thanks Luke. Alrighty, so I will, in any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to um, approve to allow staff to make the determination for um, tents in the right of way, outside of the right of way, et cetera, during these times. Motion by Riddle, second by Hoop. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Eversaw?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Ressler?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Holcamp?
Yeah.
Martins?
Yes.
And Riddle?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have the discussion of the dog park concept. How many years have we been trying to get this going and kudos that it's finally getting there? Everybody get a chance to look it over a little bit? Who's going to run with this?
Essentially, what we're looking for is the mayor stated, this has been something that's been uh, uh, definitely popping up in the year that I've been on board with the city. I know Mr. Dunneke has seen it a little bit longer than I have. Um, Mr. Dunneke and I, we've worked along with uh, Alderman Neiman to identify a potential site, uh, one twenty-four South Metter, adjacent to Metter Park. Uh, it's the site of the property that the city purchased and uh, demolished. And we've prepared a proposed layout and a project for it. Essentially what we're looking for tonight is just a yea or nay from the council. Uh, no motion needed. Is this something where the site makes sense first and foremost? Uh, the proposed layout and proposed budget, does that make sense to the council before we proceed further?
And when he says makes sense, it doesn't mean it's going to look exactly like this. It could morph. There could be more, could be less, but the general size and the general of what's going on. Alderman Martins?
I think the size is, I mean, I've been in numerous dog parks throughout the country and things like that and sixty by seventy isn't that big of a, an area for a dog park. I mean,
Right.
Dogs want to get out there, run and that. I've been out to the Waterloo one. I've been there once because it was just, it, it wasn't worth it. You know, it's small. It's, you know, if you got a dog, they, they, you know, I mean, you know, there's some dogs that don't want to run all over, but there's, that's what I see at dog park boards, letting them loose and letting them, you know, be themselves. They don't need these zigzag things and all this kind of stuff, you know? I mean, it's just, to me, the dog, Springfield, Missouri has a neat one where you've, you've got it, you've got to sign in and they, they check to make sure your dog has all its things. You get a permit, all this kind of stuff and, and, I'm sorry. And then each, each year you, you have to, you, you pay a fee to renew your thing to help the dog park going, you know, but they check that your dog has all the shots and they, they have a code to get in the, in the thing like that. So it just kind of helps that knowing when you go in there, we know that all the dogs have, have the right paperwork, whatever you want to say.
Yeah, all of that is going to be vetted through the, the city and veterinarians and things of this nature.
But I, I, to me, that's sixty by seventy is small.
I, I think with Mr. Dunneke, not to speak for Scott, I think what we were trying to accomplish was quote unquote dipping our toes into the water. Uh, let's put this out there. Let's get some amenities. Uh, let's see what kind of response we get from the community. Uh, kind of gauge usage, uh, constantly solicit feedback from patrons of the dog park. I know there were other sites that were previously discussed by our predecessors. Uh, looking at City Park, you know, looking at some other locations for possible uh, sites. But again, we thought this was a way to kind of test the water, so to speak, at a reasonable expense.
And it is expandable?
Uh, sure. Let's just, I mean,
What do you mean?
We could expand toward the park further. Um, fifteen or twenty feet.
Do we know that, that property that we purchased there where that house was, what was the uh, the total property boundaries?
You see it. Sixty-six by seven.
That was the size that that house was on.
You got it. That's.
That's the entire lot.
That's the entire lot.
So yeah, so we couldn't go towards Cherry Street, but we could definitely go towards the park if needed.
Not without acquiring property, correct.
We'd go toward the library though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's about fifteen or twenty feet before we start dropping off toward the park.
Okay.
Maybe a little.
So I guess the, the chance of expanding it to a hundred by seventy is possibly there. And, and I like the idea of at least getting it going, seeing what kind of response and maybe expanding it. I'd rather have something that we can expand than still nothing.
I, and, and mayor, I might add that what Doug said was spot on. My, my intent was let's see how things work and let's see how it's uh, received by the community. You know, I never thought we'd just start off with a, the crown jewel of dog parks. Um, more than anything, what, what I was looking for when we went to in, in with the number of calls I've received was something in a, in a very central location.
I like.
Um, that is in a route where people walk frequently so that they would actually potentially use it while they're walking their dogs. And something that was low cost and small to start with that we could then look forward to if it is a success, keeping this as a town center one. And then maybe in the future, as we do our, our park planning, look at something larger scale, more of that crown jewel type of thing in the future if the community, if this is well received by the community. That's the intent with the way we're presenting it.
And so you know, Doug just pulled up Google Earth and pulled a uh, a tape measure on Google Earth. We could expand almost another sixty feet towards the park.
More than that, yeah.
So Alderman Neiman's?
You could on this. This is, this is a start though, and it's also, it's right off the main. It's more of your urban, your urban type park. You have people you want to promote more living, living downtown. People are living above the businesses. There, there, there are a lot of apartment dwellers, things like that. You're providing for it. The scale of Metter, Metter is a small park. You, you want to keep everything within scale. I, I think if you go too enormous with anything, just picture Columbia Days. How many activities? Music at Metter. We have festival. There's a lot of other things that go on at this park. So we're trying to please all the entities. We've got other areas. We've got other areas. We just finished a trail, Tobacco Boom Shoe Craft. We've got other areas in Meadow Ridge that surely we can see how this goes. You can go more linear. You can do more of a run park like Alderman Martins is talking about. You could go linear and narrow. There's a lot of other possibilities, but this would be a start. See how it's, see how it's utilized. We've submitted all the rules, information we could possibly find and, and that there is a committee working on that, the rules and the, and the regulations for it and get a start here. Let's see how the citizens police their own area too.
Perfect.
I mean, that's, see how the grass goes. See how they clean up the area with the stations we provided and things. It's, it's a good start.
Everybody good with a start and we'll move forward? Alderman Holcamp, are you nodding your head up and down?
I am saying yes.
All right.
He did get a haircut.
I did get a haircut. Yes.
All right. So you have your direction, sir. Thank you. Before, shush. Before we go into closed session, is there anything else for the good of the council? All right. So we have a closed session under five ILCS one twenty dash two CA appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of specific employees of a public body. Five ICLS one twenty-two C five purchase lease real estate for the use of public body. And that is it. If somebody be so inclined to make that motion to go into executive session by Hoop, second by Eversaw.